Okay, we'll call to order this December the 7th, 2016, meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Here.
Vice Chair Renaud?
President.
Chair Howard?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
If you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, then please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Reverend Todd Miller of the Cherry Street Wesleyan Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, first off, thank you for having me here. It's an honor to be able to pray with you all this morning, this December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, as we pledge allegiance to our flag. Part of what I think we ought to also do is remember what happened many years ago, but also remember what's coming up. We have Christmas coming up, and I'd like to read some scripture. "Out of the stump of David's family will grow a shoot; yes, a new branch bearing fruit from the old root. And the Spirit of the Lord will rest upon him, the Spirit of wisdom and understanding, the Spirit of counsel and might." That Spirit rests upon you all also, as you all make decisions for our county. I pray that you are guided by that very Spirit. Let's bow. Heavenly Father, we do seek you, we seek you at this time, to guide these leaders of this wonderful county. What a blessing it is to be part of a community that does seek you for leadership. So I'd ask that you would fill these folks with your wisdom, your counsel. Let them seek what you want, more than what the people of the county want. It is their job to do what the people want, but I pray that they seek you in that, and the two are one. So guide us, hear us now, and let us be mindful of the people of this county and what they need. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, takes us to Correspondence and Organizational Business. We were supposed to have a quarterly update from the Conservation District, but Carrie is unable to join us today, so we'll reschedule that for a later time. Derek, do you have anything else on Correspondence?
The only thing I would add is that with regard to our search for another county administrator, we narrowed it to five applicants, and all five of them have confirmed. So we are slated next Thursday to interview five.
Good, good. Signed up someone?
Yes.
Okay, public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action to discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Gene?
Gene Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street, Pomona, Kansas. Okay. Well, you see, I'm wearing red. Gold cheese. All right. The first thing I want to say is, I want to say thank you to the 4th District of this county for picking a commissioner, and it's Richard Ornsby, and I want to thank him here from the pulpit for what he does for around town, and I think he'll make a good commissioner. Second thing is, this morning, on the radio, I couldn't believe what I heard, okay? Now, I don't know when the city, when they met this week, whether it was Monday or yesterday, but when they told what they said in there, and they're signing a letter, all of them, and it's referencing evidently that the county commissioners are picking out two acres down on the south side of 35 to rezone that two acres from light industrial to heavy industrial. So that caught my ear, because they want to put a concrete plant. Well, the city is signing a letter to you guys, why? That's going to interfere as a obstacle with that big plant down there. I don't know how big it's going to be, so I'm asking now, how big is this going to be, and when are you going to do this? This rezoning of this two acres? You know, where is it going to be down there? Is it going to be in Lowe's parking lot, or is it going to be over there somewhere close? So I guess the intent, as far as what I can see, is so that you can run to the concrete plant and get the concrete and put it down at a short distance when there's already one, we've got several here. I mean, I don't, my question is just, I have to agree with the city. I think that you do this, and you're going to jeopardize people from coming in there. And I'd like to have an explanation, but I probably won't get it today. But I know that I, it was shocked me, because I never heard you guys talk about it unless you talked about it in executive session. So I really think you need, the cat's been let out of the hat now about this very thing, because I sure did not know nothing about this, and I think it's wrong to do this, because this is just another obstacle to get around, and disarray. And I guess with that, I guess that's all I have today. Thank you.
Okay, no one else, right? Okay, that takes us to the Consent Agenda. Items that need considered and approved today on the Consent Agenda is we need to consider and approve the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for November the 30th, 2016. We also have tax change orders in the amount of minus $81.55, and we need to also consider and approve a special payroll for the pay date of December the 5th, 2016, in the amount of $287.86. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Sub move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, takes us to items of business. Our first item of business today is to consider and approve the appointment of the applicants to the Food Policy Council membership. Mitch?
Morning. Back in October, the Health Department advertised for applicants for the Food Policy Council and received more than the 12 that we put in the bylaws, and so we were really pleased with that. But we present today the 12 names of individuals throughout the county that have expressed a desire and are able to make meetings and such, work with us on the Food Policy Council to further the well-being of our citizens in regard to access to nutritious foods. And so those are there before you. They've been divided into two different terms. The first term would be for one year, which then that would be advertised again in a year, and they could be eligible to reapply should they choose to for a two-year term, but we wanted to stagger that so not everybody was on and off at the same time. The individuals that, whose term would expire in November of 2017 are Linda Corcoran, Alan Campbell, Tina Albers, Ron Hughes, Cheryl Allen, and Sherri Cohen. All have been on the Food Policy Council when it was a little less formal situation. Terms for two years, Susan Hughes, Kenneth Woods, Jennifer Lortzen, Sheila Robinson, Don Stottlemeyer, and Keith Jansen. All 12 of these have worked with us in one way or another over the last three or four years, and more recently, to further the Healthy Communities Initiative as a whole and the food policy action. So we're just asking if you have any questions, or if not, to approve that membership on the Food Policy Council.
I have no questions. Looks like a very good group. Anyone have any questions for Mitch on this? Let me get back to work. If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the appointment of the applicants to the group that Mitch just read, to the Food Policy Council membership. Sub move. Have a motion in a second?
Second.
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And Mitch, while you're still here, that was a very good meeting, sliced lunch that you put on the other day.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
It was, it was good. Okay, our second item of business, looks like Larry's going to be with us for a while today.
Again.
Will be the approval of rezoning application 1610-1428 to rezone approximately 9.86 acres from a RE residential estate zoning district to an A1 agricultural zoning district.
As you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, this request is to rezone approximately 10 acres from the RE residential estate zoning district to the A1. This is somewhat unusual, because normally our zoning goes in the opposite direction. However, this is being done with the intent of merging this 10 acres with the 75 acres or so that's immediately adjacent to it, so it becomes one parcel, and it's the father selling the land to the son, and they want to put this into one large parcel. It does have an existing residence, and frankly, brings the tract more into compliance with the county's minimum standards for lot length to width and lot frontage requirements. So the Planning Commission, in their consideration of this last month, felt that this was a move in the right direction, and had forwarded a recommendation to the county commissioners to approve this rezoning request, to rezone the 10 acres from the RE with the existing residence into the A1 agricultural zoning district, so it can be merged into a single tract.
Okay, pretty cut and dried. Seems like we've been doing a lot of these the last couple of months.
Well, this is somewhat unusual, in that it's going in the opposite direction of typically what we do.
Is the only road frontage in Iowa, is that right? Is that the only road frontage that there is? There's not a road on the west side of that, apparently? Is that right? Because basically, there is no road frontage without this new.
No. The 75 acres was owned by the father, and it was all encompassed into a much larger tract that had frontage to the north, but they're selling the 75 acres off with the, to the son that currently owns the approximate 10-acre site, which will all then be merged together.
Right. But they're going to gain a lot of road frontage on Iowa Road by doing this, which makes a lot of sense.
Right.
And it makes it much more better, yeah. I'm sure you've sent out the letters and everything to the neighboring.
Yes, typically, unless I report that there has been some opposition, typically, we get no comments for or against these rezoning requests. It's very unusual that we get any acknowledgement from the surrounding property owners at all, but if we do, most of those are phone calls, and once you explain what's going on, we don't have people in the meetings, and we don't get any written comments for or against.
Any more questions on this?
No.
If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the rezoning application 1610-1428.
Sub move.
Have a motion in a second.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, next item of business will be approval of a zoning application 1610-1430 to rezone approximately 10 acres from an RE residential estate to an A2 transitional agricultural district, and to rezone approximately 46 acres from an A1 agricultural district to an A2 transitional agricultural district.
As you've indicated, this is a rezoning request that's going to affect two parcels that currently exist, one being 10 acres at the time, the other being 46. What's occurring here is that the 46-acre tract is going to be reduced in size, as shown on the aerial photo that's attached. So it's somewhat similar to what you just considered, because they are doing a boundary line adjustment, emerging some acreage with the 10-acre site to make it approximately 30 acres. That reduces the other site, however, below the 40 acres, so we have to rezone both parcels because neither of them fit the minimum 40-acre requirement for the A1 zone. But it's a boundary line adjustment where they're going to merge some properties. One property, I guess, felt that they had more than they really wanted to take care of, and the other side decided they would like to have some additional acreage. This is out on 68 Highway, and I think the aerial photo depicts where those boundaries are very well. The Planning Commission considered this and felt that it did comply with all the requirements of our comprehensive plan, as well as our zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, and have forwarded a recommendation to you to approve the rezoning request.
Okay, any questions on this one? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the rezoning application 1610-1430. Sub move. Have a motion in a second?
Second.
Janet?
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, our fourth item of business will be the approval of rezoning application 1610-1433 to rezone approximately five acres from an A1 agricultural zoning district to an RE residential estate zoning district.
This one happens to be a little more of a traditional request. What they are proposing here is to rezone approximately five acres with the existing residents and to sell the remaining agricultural land, so the remaining, approximately 75 acres, is going to be retained for agricultural purposes. So they're simply dividing out the existing residents, which does have a water supply and sanitation in accordance with our requirements set forth in our comprehensive plan, does meet lot length to width ratios and frontage onto a county or state-maintained road system, and therefore, the Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation to you to approve this rezoning request. I have nothing further unless any of you have questions.
Okay, appears that it is pretty cut and dried. We'll look for a motion to approve the rezoning application 1610-1433. Sub move. Have a motion in a second.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay. Short today, takes us to staff reports. Derek?
Yeah, I do want to speak briefly. I think, seeing you made a timely public comment about this asphalt plant, the proposed location for the plant is off of 15 to 935. To state that this is happening and that it's a foregone conclusion is very, very inaccurate. You haven't heard the Board of County Commissioners address yet this yet, because frankly, it would be premature. It has not gotten to their level yet. We've been approached by a company who wants to locate a plant there. We've been having discussions at a staff level, Larry and I have, with the City of Ottawa, to discuss what the best potential location may be, and we haven't arrived at any conclusions yet. While it's currently slated to be heard by our Planning Commission this month, I'm somewhat confident that it will get pushed back, probably 60 days, if not more. I'm working with the company's attorney on that, and that's really all I have to add. It'll have to go through our Planning Commission before it even gets to the Board of County Commissioners, so, and before it even gets there, Larry and I will work with the city as well as other interested parties to make sure that we're guiding this in a direction that everyone in the community benefits from. And that's really all I have to add.
I thank you, I thank you for that.
I don't have anything else.
Larry, have anything else?
Well, I would report the same thing, that this is not a concrete special plant, it is an asphalt plant.
Rick, do you name the Sheriff Department?
Sure. Joy and I discussed this. We got a bill, our annual billing statement from the Kansas League of Municipalities, and every month, as you guys know, you guys get a little magazine, the Kansas Government Journal, that comes from the league, and we currently get a subscription for all the electeds, and I just wondered if that was still of interest to you guys, if we should continue your subscriptions, or maybe just get one for the commission that can be in the office there, if you guys want to take a look at it? Do any of you just love it and just die to read it every month?
No, that one is not one of the high ones. And I was reading this, I don't know if you said how much it was, but I think it was something for around 1,200. I don't.
Well, the overall bill is 1,200. I mean, the subscriptions are just $20 each, but I mean, that's still $20 each, that's $100 if all of you guys don't want one.
I don't.
I mean, I know I read it monthly, I mean, it has a lot of useful things that I feel like for me, but, I mean, I don't, I just thought it was a good time to evaluate whether we wanted to be buying all of this paper or not.
I don't, I don't think, in my opinion, we don't need that much. If one for the office would, I guess, would be fine, but I don't think.
If you got one, I don't.
I don't agree with it that much.
Just none. I agree, one for the office ought to be plenty.
Because I know, when John was here, John wanted to get one and read it, so I don't know if he was reading one of you guys'.
I think that would be enough for us. If there's one in the office and they're available, then.
So have you read that before, Derek?
I have, and I think it has some useful info, and, you know, if you have one that you read, and then one for the suite over there, that if, when these guys come in and they elect to look at it, I think it's more than sufficient.
I do, too, I don't.
And I think we need five copies of it.
Okay, sure, and I'll check with the other electeds and see if they want to continue getting it also, but I just wanted to check with you guys.
Excellent idea.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that. And one last thing, as Gene already alluded to, Rick and I were present at the meeting on Monday night, where the seven members of the Republican Committee, 4th District, held a convention to seat someone in the vacated seat by Steve Harris, and I helped Ron Keim certify that yesterday and get that off to the governor, so he has seven days to respond to that, so we'll be looking for something, to hear something on that, hopefully in the next seven days. If he doesn't, in the statute, it says that that person is automatically appointed to the seat if we don't hear anything back from the governor, so I'll let you guys know as soon as we hear something.
Okay. Takes us to Commissioner Comments and Board Reports. Want to start?
The hospital had a special call meeting, but it was all closed session, so there's nothing to report there.
Last Wednesday night, I went to the Wellsville City Council meeting. Be honest with you, after I gave my report, I left feeling well, and then Monday night, I went to the Rantoul City Council meeting, and they did not have a quorum, so we postponed that one to next Monday, which, same date as the Lane meeting, so we'll see how that plays out.
Only place I've been is to the Perry Palos Animal Shelter, and I had a stray come by, and they helped me out, take care of the stray dog, and Melissa's here, she might want to say something here, so I'd like to have Melissa come up and say hi.
Just, I'm available for questions, and hopefully you got my monthly report. We're finishing out the year good, a little tight right now, but that's to be expected from the changes that we've made, but have plenty of space right now, so we're, have a few open kennels, but hopefully we'll be filling those pretty quickly, but just business as usual.
Do you have any, like, Christmas sales or promotions, I guess you could?
Yeah, we did, we partnered with Best Friends Animal League, and we've got some cats and dogs that we've chosen that are a little bit harder to place, that are $25 right now through the end of the year, so definitely, if anybody's looking for a pet, now's the time, and we've got a special going.
Well, if you want to make a trip out to Waynesburg, and you want some cats, trust me, you can fill the rest of those kennels plus some.
You know where some cats are.
They are everywhere, it seems like, in town now.
Well, that's noted.
I don't think they're really picking up with cats running loose.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's not the first time that I've heard that, but that's on our agenda, too. Our TNR in Ottawa has kind of slowed down, and during the winter, it will slow down a little bit, it's harder to trap the cats, because they're seeking shelter and those kind of things, but we are expanding outside of the Ottawa area, looking at Franklin County and what cities, and having conversations on how we can do TNR in those cities as well, so we'll put that on the list.
We had a stray show up, and my wife felt sorry for it and fed it, and obviously, it told its friends.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, the word gets out pretty quickly on that. Awesome, well, thank you guys so much for your support, we deeply appreciate it, and again, I'm always available for questions if you have any.
Thank you for the job you're doing. Hey, I attended two meetings yesterday morning. The first one was the Franklin County Development Council Executive Board, and we talked, old business was, as it has been for some time, talking about the industrial arc and where we're going with that. Also, our new business, talked a lot about the day on the job, that putting on with the school, and how we're going to proceed with the day on the job. There was some discussion whether to move it to having it be juniors or stay as seniors, and that'll be decided later, but it appears, as far as the board is concerned, they want to stay with seniors, so they'll be talking to Dr. Cobb's about that. And talked about a full board retreat that will be coming up later, discuss where they're going to have that and how they're going to go about putting that on. They did talk a little bit about the 15th Street, I-35 possibly rezoning, there wasn't a lot got into about that, but it was brought up. On December the 16th, from 11:00 to 2:00, at the Chamber, there will be a holiday open house, so if you want to stop by the Chamber there and have probably some cookies or something, that'll be going on, so let you know that's going to be there. And the next executive board meeting will be January the 3rd, and that's pretty much that. And then after that meeting was over, I went to the RC&amp;D Board Meeting, had a guest speaker from Coffey County Conservation District, and she just basically let us know some of the things that Coffey County was working on at this time. There was also a gentleman there, and I don't remember what his name was, but he also was from Coffey County, and he talked to us, and seemed to have a lot of information about the dredging project out at John Redmond, and kind of filled us in on how that was going, and what they were going to do with the stuff they've dredged out into those ponds, and how they were going to handle that stuff, which was interesting. Don talked about, they made another trip up to Ellsworth and took up several bikes, and he talked about the bike program and so forth, and also talked about Canada's feeding the hungry. There was a state meeting in Wichita on November the 20th that he attended, and he gave a report on some of the topics that was discussed at the meeting, and that was pretty much most of that meeting. That's the last, the only things I've been to since the last meeting. Okay. We do have a study session on December the 12th, correct? Shows here. Okay. Also, have a request to enter into executive session for a matter of attorney-client privilege for 30 minutes. It'll be with the commission, the council slash administrator. It's 9 o'clock, you want to take five minutes or?
I'm good.
Look for a motion to enter executive session for 30 minutes, that will go in at 9 o'clock. Sub move. Have a second?
Second.
On favor? I have it at 9:30. Okay, we're back at an executive session at 9:30. No action taken. If there's nothing else, we'd look for a motion to adjourn. Sub move. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we're adjourned.